Board meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
There's honestly not a better way to start a meeting than with little voices in our audience. But because we have little voices in our audience, I would like to move up two of our items, discussion items. I have Special Olympics and we have Link Together. So we, Link Together, like to go first?
Our main project this year was to raise money to start a fund for playground repairs. We did this by collecting box tops and running the store. The box tops that we collected during last summer and the first half of the year were just four hundred and thirty-four dollars. We have another check for you today, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, making the total that we made from box tops, eight hundred and sixty-two. We also opened a store that ran from four to five each day from September to January. We raised three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents at the store. On February second, we gave the school board eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-three cents to start a fund for the playground repairs at the elementary school. That same night, someone also donated a one hundred dollars to the fund. We will be giving you six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents to add to the fund tonight.
That was Derek, by the way, right?
Yes. The store was a lot of work. We had to keep inventory of our supplies, sell the items, collect the money, and keep track of what we sold. The next day, we would have to compare the money that we collected with the tally sheet to make sure that they matched and adjust the inventory count. At the end of each month, we had to pay Link Together back what we had borrowed from them to pay for the supplies that we needed.
Caitlin, is that right?
We would also like to remind people that are watching that they can collect box tops all through the summer and bring them to the elementary school where our lemonade stand on Wednesday, Link Together will be open from six thirty to six. There's a collection bag on the bulletin board in my cafeteria and clear away on the field trip.
Thank you, Danica.
Hi.
Danica, when does your lemonade stand open?
Open space from eleven to one with a rain date of Friday.
Thank you.
And we'll also be selling finger puppets at the lemonade stands so that the money from the lemonade stand goes to plants for the garden and the finger puppets will go toward the...
Thank you.
Wow. Well, thank you very much for coming. It's a lot of work. It is a lot of work. Any, anything else that you want to tell us? Oh, you've got actual, they've got the cast! That's important!
I would say the board loves that.
If you want to come around and...
On behalf... I'd love to accept this. I have to go to college, no.
Well, thank you very much. And your name again was?
Caitlin.
Caitlin, thank you. Danica, thank you. And Derek, thank you so much. A lot of work. Very exciting. All right.
Yeah, we'll turn it over to the finance director for safe, safe keeping.
Thank you. So now I'd like to hear from Special Olympics?
Yes. Our head coach is coming forward with the team. Should we just stand here or...
Absolutely. Look at all the medals.
Wow.
So this is six of the members of the New Market Star Special Olympics team. We had a dozen members, not everyone could come. And one, two, five, five of our volunteers. And we just finished competing in the two thousand and seventeen state games at the University of New Hampshire. And each of them would like to just say one thing quickly if that would be all right.
Great.
Sure.
Can you say your name too?
Hi, I'm James Edwards Cassidy and I'm a freshman and I'm a fifteen years old guy.
You know what, Dave, since you're so tall, I'm gonna go this way. Okay, that's... I don't see your whole page on TV.
Is it on recording?
Yes, it is.
Okay, sorry.
Let me write it again.
Hi, I'm James Cassidy and I'm fifteen years old and then I'm a freshman. And, and my favorite sport is running with long jumps.
Nice. And thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe and I am, and I am thirteen years old. My favorite thing is the softball pro and the, and the running in the, in the Olympic town.
Hi, my name is Joshua Towne Desmond. I graduated from New Market High School in two thousand and seven. My favorite Olympic sport was the fifteen hundred meter walk and the running long jump.
Wow, nice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dylan Cassidy. I'm fifteen years old. I'm a junior, senior high school. And my favorite thing in Special Olympics is the softball pro and running long, running long jump.
Very popular. Navea? It's just us. Yeah, don't worry. It's just us.
This is Navea. This was her first year and she was a little nervous, but she did it. And your favorite sport was, event was? Running long jump. Running long jump.
Nice, nice. And you won a medal.
We've got one more athlete right here.
My name is Camille and I'm fifteen. My favorite thing about Special Olympics is the softball pro.
Thank you.
We've got some good arms out there.
So, that's it?
Yeah, well, can you tell us maybe a little bit about our program? I think we've had twenty athletes in some years and this has been going on for quite a while.
Yeah, we probably had the team, I think, about twenty years. And it's, it's grown, it's, sometimes it's six athletes, sometimes it's fifteen athletes. And we compete mostly in the track and field events in the summer. We have in the years past also done snowshoes, but not every year. And I could not run this program without my volunteers. That's, I mean, everyone just donates their time. And we also couldn't do it out without these tremendous athletes.
The volunteers, say their names. Do you guys mind saying your names?
Oh, my volunteers.
Or you could introduce them.
Carol Podir. She teaches kindergarten. Molly Eeby. She's a rehabilitative aide in kindergarten.
I'm Howard Hoss. I'm a parent professional at the junior high.
I'm Stacey Bixby. I'm a parent professional at the elementary school.
And missing for athletes, we had Daniel Denuzia, Abby Locke, and Ephraim Hanks, and Genevieve Malore, and Jeremy Kennedy.
Don't forget Jeff, prevent Jeff Ruck.
And so our other volunteer, we had Jay Brook.
And Ms. Carey.
And Ms. Carly Gray. And Nick Evans. And Susan Dayon. And Erin Gigi. And we also had two student volunteers, Josie Farnes and, three actually. Josie Farnes, Caitlin Temple, and Gabrielle.
Thank you.
Gabrielle.
Nice. Terrific.
They put in a lot of time and practice. We practiced for eight weeks, twice a week after school. And then we participated in the regional games at Exeter High School, because that's how the Special Olympics runs. And then we participated in the state games.
Terrific.
A big commitment.
Very big commitment from the students and their families, so thank you all.
I couldn't do it without the families.
And where do you guys practice?
So we practice behind the elementary school for forty-five minutes, twice a week. But the, I, we also could not do this without the parents because they transport, they pick up their kids, they take them to the events and bring them back. All good.
Maybe we could take a little break and congratulate our athletes and thank our Link Together students?
All right. Well, we could go over the, first of all, that was wonderful. It's always good to have the little voices. We could go over the calendar right now if everybody wants to do it quickly?
Sure.
So we have our next board meeting. We're gonna discuss that later on. We'll talk about our retreat and the first meeting of the new school year. If anybody didn't make it to graduation, it was an event, as always. And that's it. That's all. We don't have a student report.
Well, we don't have a student here with us tonight, so next week, the building committee's meeting on Wednesday. On Thursday, fifth grade has their graduation ceremony in the afternoon.
Is it four next week, Meredith?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right.
Four.
It is at four o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Okay.
Fifth grade has their stepping up or graduation ceremony on the afternoon, I think at one o'clock on Saturday, the twenty-second. And then eighth grade is at six P M. that evening. And Friday will be the last day of school, which is a half day for students, early release. The twentieth, just backing up, beginning of the week at six P M. is sixth grade parent night. For incoming sixth graders.
Okay.
And it's finals at the junior, senior high next week, or the high school next week, so...
Beginning Monday.
Beginning Monday.
Make-up day on the twenty-third. Also step up day for incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will take place during that early release day.
On the morning of the twenty-fourth.
On the morning of the twenty-fourth.
And that is also true at the elementary school, that step-up day is the twenty-third, so.
Nice.
Yeah. And then our teachers and staff will be back the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, which are still workdays for us. But students will be done for the summer.
That'll be great. Are there any questions about the calendar? Seeing there is none, do you want to move on to the superintendent report?
How about if we go to the Mandarin Chinese presentation so that we can get these last few people on the rest?
Perfect.
So with us is our Mandarin Chinese teacher, Mr. McDonald, and we will let him start.
Okay. Hello? Yeah, again, I'm Mr. McDonald. See if I can get this thing to work. I'm just gonna talk for a few minutes. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Olivia Wallace is here as well. She's one of my students. She gracefully decided to be here. If you have any questions specifically for her, you can ask her. I have a lot of information I can give you, but I don't think you want to be here all night through a Chinese class, so I'm not really gonna do that. We introduced Chinese Mandarin at the junior, senior high school this year. And we have two things. We have introduction to Chinese Mandarin. That goes to the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They're a rotating group. They go for ten weeks. And then they're done. And then another group comes in for ten weeks. So we have that group, that I'll show a little bit more on that. It's basically an introduction to language and culture of China. We introduced Chinese Mandarin one to the high school, so that's open to the high school students, any of the high school students. And we had, we had nine of those. I'll go into that in a minute. But it's high school students only and it's a full-year course, all right? And so that's what that is. So where do we go with that this year?
Do I have to dance for you?
Yeah, I think we're gonna go with this. Okay, so Chinese Mandarin one, this is the high school class, okay? We did twelve lessons this year. We focused on introduction to characters. We did, you know, a lot of assignments about writing characters, translations, et cetera. And we did assessments about oral comprehension, comprehension for speaking, reading comprehension, et cetera. Class was consisted of six freshmen, two sophomores, and a junior for nine total students. That's what we had in, so that's Mandarin one this year, okay? Am I going fast?
No.
Just as a reminder, this is the first year, obviously, that we've offered Mandarin. It was the replacement for French, which was discontinued at the end of last year by student vote, essentially.
So it's actually a great segue in that it's almost exactly the year to the day that we presented this change and we reviewed it. So the phase out would be that last, this coming year, the last year we have any students enrolled in a French course, which are now totally online. Perfect segue to what would happen next to take its place.
And how many students would have been in French one?
Oh, who showed interest in French one?
Well, I mean, traditionally, if I look back five...
Over the last five years, the numbers really supported this move in that the enrollments were four, five, six students?
So less than...
Far less, yes. And that, in some pockets in the state, is, is what's happening.
Remember that we also offer Spanish as our, for incoming grade students.
Okay, so, so going forward from this year into Mandarin two, we had nine students in Mandarin one. All nine of them are going into Mandarin two.
That's good.
That's great to hear.
That's really good.
So they're doing that. So this group is now going to Mandarin two, and it's all the same group, okay? So nine total students. Changes for next year, more history, culture. We focus mainly on language. That's the main thing I focused on. More audio, video, continued focus on reading. I was pretty heavy on the reading. I've talked to some of the kids and they thought, you know, geez, I, you know, I'd like to maybe focus on some other things. But the reading is really the hardest thing, so that's the hurdle you need to get through. So I focused a lot on reading. Next year, field trip, I want to do that. I'm actually doing a personal day tomorrow and I'm going down to the PBD Essex Museum where they have a pretty extensive Chinese collection down there. So maybe we can get that. So budget, that would be great.
Okay, so... That house there is from the province where my daughter's from. From Anhui province.
Yeah, it's the, from the Qing dynasty, yeah. So unfortunately, I'm going there by myself, but hey. Okay, so introduction to Chinese Mandarin. As a reminder, that's the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, okay? So they, the sixth graders, we had twenty-five total students for sixth grade. We had small classes, and these guys did really well because the classes were so small. We had six or seven students in the class, and they picked it up really fast. Seventh graders, we had eighty-one total, so we had about twenty per student, per quarter. Same with the eighth graders, about twenty per quarter. Same, you know, we did a lot of the same stuff, slower thing. They're younger. I wanted to keep it fun because we're really trying to build the program, so we kept it. It was more like fun. We did a lot of talking and, you know, we focused on speaking. We did a lot with the characters. A lot of focus on the characters because the kids like that kind of, that kind of tactile part of it and the art part of it. So we, you know, I learned as I went along. I started out of the gate pretty hard and I kind of adjusted my approach as I went because I knew these kids, they wanted to, they want to have fun, right? So they're not in it like college students taking Mandarin to, you know, master it immediately. So that's what we did. Similar approach, a lot of the same materials that I used in Mandarin one, I used with these guys, just at a slower pace. We went about three to four lessons. And we're about, I think we're standard, I think I'll probably standardize about three lessons with these guys and really get them to master it, master those characters, et cetera. So where are we going with that this year? Okay, so this is just to make clear what we're, what I'm gonna talk about. Who's moving from introduction to Chinese Mandarin to Mandarin one in high school? So from these guys, obviously, none of these guys are taking Mandarin one in high school. It's just gonna, the feeder program really is the eighth graders. So right now, we have twenty enrolled for next year in Mandarin one. Let's see. Yeah, there are gonna be three juniors, those guys that never took Mandarin one before. They just enrolled because maybe they talked to people or they didn't think about it last year. Two sophomores and fifteen former eighth graders. And so there's twenty total enrolled in Mandarin one for next year. So we're pretty happy with that as far as, you know, the turnout for that. And I got two more this morning that said they're gonna do it. They enroll in groups of two.
Yes.
We're coming in, so we'll see two more, but I'll wait to see that. So we've got twenty right now, you know, some of the same major, same changes that I'll do, that I talked about before. But that's pretty much it. I mean, that's where we're going next year. The Mandarin two, you know, will, I'm working on that curriculum for next year, so.
I think it's a pretty great start that your numbers are more than doubling from one year to the next. Says a lot. And I, I would expect that we'll continue to see that trend grow as students have the repeated exposure through the middle school years.
Right, the sixth and seventh graders, yeah, as they see it, so. Yeah, so we're pretty happy with that. Anybody have any questions? That's great.
I guess the question I would have is, the first year, you can mix all the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. How's that transition gonna work as you get past that first year when, when you don't want to be duplicating what they had last year and you've got kids from multiple grades? How's that work?
You know, I've thought about that. I, you know, when you have it for ten weeks, I'm not gonna expect anybody to remember anything. And I'm just gonna start, and if we go fast, we go fast. But we're just gonna, we're gonna do a lot. I'll have, I'll have some changes to the lessons, but I'm gonna just assume, you know, we're gonna learn the basics all over again. You know, the, the thing about Chinese is you've got the character component. You've gotta learn the pinyin component, which is the romanization of the letters. That's like learning another language, and then you've just gotta learn the speaking part of it. I don't think there's anything wrong with having that, just, just totally hearing that all over again. So that's, that's the approach I'm gonna take. And if we go quickly, we go quickly. But we're gonna have new people as well, right? Especially the sixth graders, because not all the sixth graders took it. So we're gonna have a heterogeneous group, so why not just let them hear it again? And if there were an asterisk, a place for an asterisk, if you look at that number of twenty-five sixth graders, remember when we changed and added a section of the pending course this year so that it's specific to sixth grade? It did not fit into a schedule of six, of sixth graders to have the language and Mandarin course this year. So that's why that number looks a little bit skewed. We do have sixty-eight students as sixth graders, but only twenty-five at this spot of the schedule.
Is that something that we'll be looking at moving forward as you raise that?
Yes, we'll be looking at it going forward. There doesn't seem to be an easy fix in sight, but we haven't stopped looking at it.
That's good.
I think it would be a great person to be a friend of mine, I think.
Ni hao.
Do you have a question, Olivia?
Yes.
Yes.
You have to come up though, Olivia, right to the microphone.
Can you just talk about your experience a little bit?
So Olivia, what grade are you in first?
I'm a freshman. I'm a ninth.
Great.
Okay, obviously, this is my first year in taking Mandarin and I found it really interesting. I think it was interesting to go from, you know, having like an alphabet and, and to having just characters where you have to learn, you have to learn different components, and going to language that is very heavy on the tones. And I enjoyed, I enjoyed the class and I think it's fun for me. I enjoy challenge and I do think Mandarin is a challenge, but it's a great challenge because it makes you start to think in a different way, way because it's such a different language and you really have to try hard to learn this language. And it's not one of those things where you, you're like, okay, I can pay attention in class and just never study. It teaches you to study because if you're not constantly going over your words, going over the characters, you don't learn it. And one thing I think is good is that the more and more you learn, the more and more things are repeated. So it's not like we just did lesson one and that was it. It's repeated throughout all lessons. You see, we still use things from lesson one and two and lesson ten and eleven, which is really nice. And it's just really re- reiterated the more and more we, the farther and farther we go, and I really liked it.
Great.
How much homework? How many hours do you think you spent on the homework on an evening or minutes? How's that?
Um, depending on what the homework was, because some days it's just writing down the characters, which takes ten, twenty minutes. Other days it's translating something, which depending on your ability to study and know the characters, it can take thirty to an hour, thirty minutes to an hour. I don't think anything was too difficult for us. It was enough to challenge us without making us too worried about, about it. And if we didn't understand anything, we could just leave it blank and he would help us during class.
So it looks like you're continuing next year? So is this a language you can see yourself studying through high school? And is it something right now you think, wow, this might be something I use later in my life?
Yeah, yeah, I really like it. I think it's an interesting language and with the language comes the culture and it's really interesting to find out a culture that's completely different to American culture. And just, it's, I think it's the most spoken language in the world, so it's important to know, I think.
Any other questions?
It's, so it's, is, is, she's a freshman, so she will, will have, explain to me what the progression is to high school?
Mandarin one, Mandarin two, Mandarin three, Mandarin four.
Okay. Okay. And each year, it's, is it a semester?
It's a full-year class, full-year course, yeah. So Mandarin one is a full year, and each year will be a full year.
And a full year of a high school language course isn't necessarily equivalent to a full year of a college language course, but probably they'd be ready for potentially an intermediate level of Chinese when they entered college. I mean, we'll see, right? It's your first exposure.
Yeah, I think so. I think the way these guys are going, I think that they would be very ready for that, you know?
That's going to look crazy on your resume, you know?
And typically colleges look for two to three years.
So is there, is there some way, if somebody will go through four years, what would be the expectation at the end of four years? Is somebody able to read? Is somebody able to communicate?
Yeah, I think.
Or is that not the right way to think of it?
No, I think being able to communicate, obviously being able to communicate. I think these guys are definitely learning how to communicate, that they could get off a plane in China and get their way around. They could go to a restaurant. I mean, after four years, I'm talking about.
Really?
Right? And I think you could pretty easily expect to get in a cab, say where you want to go. We spent a lot of time on getting around, you know? We did a whole unit on giving directions, and that's all we did. So it's like, go down here, go straight, you know, go to the intersection, take a left. So it was actually pretty fun, we thought it was. They had a good time with it. But just doing stuff like that, they should pretty much have that down.
Yeah, and the intermediate level, I think, if I'm remembering these correctly, ACTFO, which is the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Language, defines the intermediate level as a really good tourist level, essentially. You can communicate, get around. You're not fluent by any means. That takes much more advanced study, but you can communicate and get around, and you probably, as I said, would start at an intermediate level language course in college.
So you could not read a book or a newspaper?
Newspaper might be a little difficult, but they would be able to read, they might get the idea of a lot of articles. You know, there'd be certain characters they haven't seen. The, you know, I used as my guide the same book that they're using up at UNH for the first year students. We got through the same book that they, in a year, that they go through in a semester course. We got through, well, we didn't get through, there's one chapter we didn't get through. Well, you could say two, because ten were kind of a little bit short. But yeah, we got through most of that, so you can say most of that stuff they got through, and they know the characters, and they can write the characters, and they can recognize a lot more.
These are the freshmen, so imagine how the sixth, seventh, and eighth, that they continue with it.
If they stick with it.
Yes.
Olivia made a really good point. It doesn't go away. It's not like studying World War One and then World War Two, and, you know, or whatever. It's just like, oh, I didn't get that particular thing, but I could catch up. It's just like, you've got to know everything all the way through, so.
That's really.
If you're building on it and you stick with it, I think that they should be in pretty good shape.
So about how many characters would they learn, say, in a year? And how many characters would an educated Chinese use to read, say, to read? Not necessarily a New York Times equivalent newspaper, but a, you know.
USA Today.
Yeah, USA Today.
Yeah, so, you know, this is something that a lot of people debate. College-educated person is, you know, twenty-five hundred to three thousand characters that they would need to know. That's a college-educated person. But what you're going to see, Olivia, is that the more you learn, the faster you can learn, right? So you took getting, you know, so these guys are probably at writing characters. Probably, you guys are.
I think it's at about a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, you know, two hundred. That's writing, okay? But they can recognize a lot more. But actually, writing them is around there, a hundred and fifty. I didn't sit down and count them, but so that's where.
Does it become intuitive after a while, the characters, you can kind of figure out what they are easier or easier?
Um, in a way, there are some, characters are made up of different components, and each component has its own meaning. And if you can understand the meaning and understand all the, not all of them, but get a big understanding of them, when you see them together, you can kind of have an idea of what they mean. And there are some components, like, there's one component, I don't know how it says, but it's what it sounds like. But it has, anytime it's in a font, it has to do with feminine or female things, or just being a female, something like that, or something that's traditionally, traditionally feminine. And there's also a masculine equivalent.
I have an eighth grader that took it, and it was fascinating to watch the characters be created, and she knew what they were. Looked like pretty scribbled to me, you know?
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck next year.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Would we like to open it up for public comment? You're just here to visit?
I was here.
I will give it a minute. Somebody might come in. All right, we're over. That's over. So let's do the superintendent report now.
Okay. I'm going to start with the sad part, which is two resignations. We received letters of resignations from Yipu Han, who's a special education teacher for us at the junior senior high, as well as from Garen Murphy, who's an English teacher for us at the high school. Both of them are high school teachers.
Yeah.
So we wish them well in their new endeavors and thank them for their service to our district. We had graduation last Friday, very festive event, well-attended in a beautiful evening. And awards night was the night before that, and our students received, I believe, over thirty-five thousand dollars in scholarship funds, which is terrific. Those are sort of the local funds. In addition, we had another student who received over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in Army ROTC scholarship funds, so really great, great evening for those kids. We have four young men going into military service, and a number of students going on to career in technical college, university system of Hampshire and Maine.
And how many, fifty percent get scholarship, how many, I forget the percentage again?
Half of the class received scholarship awards at awards night.
Yep. And there were more that were offered, but people hadn't signed up for them, and we had to make sure that that gets out. People need to just apply. But I think people are intimidated, but next year, we should really get more applications out there. Is there, in the senior seminar, do we teach how to apply for a scholarship?
It's part of senior seminar informally, but through Naviance, it starts as freshmen. So through the Naviance accounts, through the guidance office, that's typically how it goes. Then the deadline is sort of our fast and furious through junior year.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to go off on a tangent.
Our bond for the building project was sold on June sixth, two thousand seventeen, at an interest rate of three point three three percent. And this should go out in the town newsletter tomorrow, but that's a savings of about eight and a half million dollars over the life of the bond from what we projected to taxpayers back in March. So great news for the community, and people will see that when the tax bills come out in December, so.
I think we hit it literally at the bottom, because didn't the interest rate go up yesterday?
Yes. Well, you said it was, I thought it was interest rate, but you said maybe it was short-term?
I think it was short-term interest rates had ticked up immediately another quarter of a percent. But again, we certainly hit at a great time, and it was a much more favorable rate than we had anticipated. So it's terrific news.
I think we need to spend a little more time talking about that because it is such, I think we were planning on four, two?
Four and a quarter was what we projected in March.
Three, three.
Almost a point.
Huh? It's almost a point. I mean, it's, we ought to spend a little, yeah.
I'm knocking on wood.
Now, what we published, if people look back and reference that little flyer that we sent out, that one. That was.
That was at four and a quarter, one point two five, yeah.
So again.
Doesn't get any better than that.
We understand it because we sat through bond, you know, we've sat through so much. So to say it's a whole point, I mean, it shows up in the, it'll show up on the tax bill. Because we can't guess at the amount.
And I also think the work that Meredith and Lisa did on evaluating other options for bonds. And we went through four other options, I believe. And it was, it was tons of work, and you kept the board informed about what it meant. And I'm just, I think the whole community ought to be thrilled that we got, through your work, we captured the right bond.
That's a really good point, Al.
Thank you for that, but it's the work for the taxpayers. It's our job to make sure we're helping the community spend its monies as wisely as they can and to convey that information to you so you can make the most informed decisions. So thank you, but it's just our job. I did want to also mention.
Eight million dollar job?
Eight and a half million.
It's only eight and a half million.
I just got the latest, it's dated June fourteenth, in fact, impact fees update from the town. And while we can't draw down these funds until two thousand twenty-one, I just want to note that right now, we have a balance of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars in impact fees. So again, in a few years, those are monies that, that again, have already been collected that can be used to defer expenses in whatever manner the board at that time chooses to use them for school improvement. They are funds collected essentially from development that occurs in town. So a percentage is assessed for school and for wastewater and water and recreation based on the scope of the development. And then those funds are set aside in an account and can be used for improvements to those parts.
Aspects of the.
Those aspects of the town, right, those departments essentially. So those are funds that are going to be there in a few years. What else do I have? We have some textbooks at the junior senior high that we will be disposing of. You have a disposal policy, and the first thing we try to do with those is sell them off if we can. So there is a company that buys back used textbooks, so they have offered to come and buy back some of those. It won't be for a lot of money, but at least it is some money back that will again go into our accounts and defer future, future expenses. And, yeah, tomorrow's field day at the elementary school. And we didn't have our student report, but there are a lot of end-of-year events and field trips and exciting moments for students and families, and energy level is high in both buildings. It's a very exciting time of year, and it's a time of transitions. And students and teachers are doing a lot of work to prepare students for those transitions from one grade level to the next. And just want to acknowledge all of that hard work and the effort that goes into making that as smooth as possible for students and families, because it is important. And our students become quite attached to the teachers and staff they work with, and as do, in many cases, their families. And so those transitions from year to year are, you know, while we, it's just part of the work that we do, the significance is not lost on those of us who see those teachers in action every day and those staff members. So I thank them, and I will, I did mention at a prior meeting that we were looking at the possibility of moving, I mean, our replacement computer cycle to look at sort of reducing the scope of our Windows machines and moving more towards a Chromebook environment. We are continuing to move in that direction. We may be asking the board for a meeting because we talked about having some of our technology funds drawn out of the Technology Trust. So we may be trying to do that before the end of June in order to have some devices available for staff use during the summer so that they can become comfortable with Chromebook devices. So we'll apprise you of that.
Yeah, verify with the auditors whether or not we have to have the.
We'll apprise you of that. Typically, we don't do our trust withdrawals until the end of a fiscal year. But in this case, because we may wish to take delivery of the devices before July one, we may need to do that withdrawal earlier. And I think that's it. We're going to hear much more from Lisa in a little while, but I will close there and wish everyone a wonderful summer vacation. And I say that, but we do have summer school programs that we'll be running this summer as well. Our extended school year program for some of our students identified with special needs who have individual education plan services being provided, as well as our Title I summer program and our program for students at risk at the elementary school.
And we have Phillips Exeter Academy.
We have some students at the junior senior high who will be going to Phillips Exeter this summer.
That's good, something to look forward to. Or you can go to the beach.
Or both.
Or both. All right, so should we move on to school board committee reports? Mike, do you want to talk about your?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week. Correct me, Meredith, weeks are flying by. It was last week, June seventh, right?
June seventh.
Yeah, okay. So we went over plan updates. Nothing major in terms of changes. Again, this meeting's on the, what is it, YouTube?
It is on YouTube, Channel thirteen.
So people want to watch and get all the details, they can watch. So we went through structural updates with the structural TF Moran. Went through some structural issues with us. They're continuing to look at things as we anticipated they would. Again, we did not do, nor could we have done, a full breakdown of every square inch underneath the walls and, you know, behind the panels and all that. So they're doing that sort of thing now, so really getting down to the nitty-gritty. So that'll go on throughout the summer. We went through the kitchen layout, which was very impressive, I thought. A sea change from where we're at now. I mean, the kitchen now is not much bigger than our ones at home, literally. So it's going to be, that'll be a really, really big change and a good one. So, and then we went through some code review updates as well and how the building code, how the seismic code might impact or not our project. So all ongoing. We're meeting again every two weeks. It's going to be all throughout the summer. The target is, I think, Meredith, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're going to do another budget review at the end of July. And then, then keep trucking. And towards September or October, there'll be, I think, a final budget review. And by that point, really be close to our final construction drawings. And the project, once the final construction drawings are done, goes out to bid in the winter. So we get your best prices then, typically. So lots more details, but both the notes and the meeting are online, so.
And if I may just add to that briefly, there have been additional meetings going on in-house as well. And with some of those folks, we had electrical and mechanical engineers on site yesterday for several hours. We had a meeting with them in the afternoon. Jason, our IT director, was involved in those meetings. Greg Marles, our facilities director, has been sitting in on those. We had meetings last week. So there are a lot of people making the rounds and trying to get a look at all of those pieces. And as Mike said, those additional inspections are ongoing and will continue throughout, into and throughout the summer.
Yep.
So we will be plugging away.
Good. Andrew, would you like to talk about the SST graduation, though?
I think we talked about that the last time because we dashed in from that.
That's right.
But there is another SST board meeting on Monday that I will be attending, and Margaret Callahan was most gracious and gave me a wonderful tour last Friday. If parents and teachers have not yet had a chance to see that, they absolutely should visit to see the wealth of opportunity for our students.
It's crazy, isn't it?
It is crazy impressive. Besides the very specialized subject areas, just that whole workforce readiness approach that happens there is incredible. And programs like their pre-engineering program that starts at ninth grade that students can go on, and some of the opportunities that the technical students have right out of high school to making five-digit salaries.
They are actually coveted, those welding students, they are looking to hire them because he is such a great teacher. The teaching program is amazing. They have a full portfolio by the time they leave. I do, I think it's a gem. We're so lucky to have it.
I told Margaret, the NEA has an education scholarship that I'm going to track down next week, week after next, to see if we can get some of that information. I'm sure they've given them for this year, but they need students who are already in some kind of an education organization. And I think those students are the ideal ones to apply, and so I'm going to get that information.
Oh, that would be nice.
Because it would potential for about three more scholarships.
And they, their scholarship. And they, their scholarship evening was the same night as their graduation. And there are lots of, there was a lot of money on the table that evening.
So much money.
Really some tremendous opportunities.
And again, it's just, we have to, you just have to teach your kids to apply. Mine didn't.
Yeah, variety, a wide variety of opportunities available there.
Yes.
So, you know, as you're planning out your high school course, coursework and your future plans, don't, don't rule that out. Definitely take a look and, and see what is available there.
I felt like even parents of our, our junior high students, if you go over to look at it as your child is in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, so you are looking at what's four years out and, and where to have your child freshman year so that they're in a position to make the best advantage of the opportunities that are available, it would be incredible.
And I will say at the awards night, Margaret gave a great shout out to our kids. She said that all the teachers can always tell a Newmarket child because they're just polite and happy, which is, what a nice thing to say.
And she told me that as I got there too, 7:30 in the morning, and they were rolling in about five minutes after me.
Yeah, so nice.
Just mentioned briefly, Ms. Shelton's not here.
That's true.
But we, she and I attended yesterday the Seacoast Learning Collaborative Board Meeting where they approved the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. They are still exploring potential future space options, but have a secure spot for at least the, it's secure for all of the next school year, but they are continuing to explore other options just from a location standpoint. So we'll see.
The old location's gone?
That location, I think, has, has been ruled out.
Okay.
But they're, they're, they have been at the Gonnick Mill for the second half of this year. That space remains available to them and is under lease agreement for the upcoming year. And, and we'll see if other spaces are, are found in the interim. It's a, it's been a tremendous space. The, the greatest challenge is just the, the travel distance for some of those students to participate in their programs.
That's what I was wondering. All right. So then we can move on to the Newmarket hockey agreement?
Yes, so in your packet, you approved a football agreement with, sorry, with Epping several meetings ago. This is the Portsmouth Agreement. And there's no approval required here. This is the information that is shared with the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association that they approved. And we just wanted to make sure, because there was an inquiry at a prior meeting, that you had the information about that program and how that arrangement works. Hockey is one of those programs where families contribute a fair amount of money for student participation because they pay for the lion's share of ice time for their children.
I remember when we did this too, and the big discussion was, this is so much cheaper than what they've already been paying.
Yes, I remember that discussion.
Yeah, so it's, I'm glad we still have the program going.
Where do they skate? Where's there?
Nexter.
It's at the ranks?
Oh, no, it's, is it at Nexter or is it, yes?
It typically is, but, but ice time is always at a premium. And so there, it's always an exploration every season. And you can see where you can find availability at the most reasonable price at the times that are going to best fit your team. So nothing is ever ruled out when you're exploring ice time.
All right, now, should we discuss the board's summer meetings or should? All right, so in your packet, it also said, we talked about August 22nd retreat. Didn't know if any, what the, who could make it. I don't think I'm going to be able to be there.
I think Ms. Shelton was looking at the 22nd as a possible retreat date, knowing that the board already had a meeting scheduled for the 24th and thinking that might increase the likelihood that people would be in town as opposed to trying to schedule things in a couple of different weeks during the summer.
I am, I'm out. That week. The rest of the summer, I'm here, so, yeah.
Anything but, okay.
So that's two down.
As far as I know, I'm here and haven't booked something for that.
So maybe what I would ask, as Kim, Kim's not here either, but maybe you could share with her and/or with me any weeks that you know you will be away during the summer. And then we can, when she's back and available, identify a couple of alternative dates. If two members are going to be missing, it probably will not be ideal to have a retreat. There are only five of you.
When does school start? It starts the 28th, right?
First day for students is the 28th of August, yes.
We'll have to, I guess we can all look at our schedules and figure that out. All right, so-
Students, so how are we going to orchestrate that? We're going to let Kim-
Send Kim and/or me know any times that you will be away this summer and we'll work from that.
How does the week of August 14th look for everybody? Is that... Maybe we could send that and see how Kim does with that and what you're doing and see if we can do something. It can always be. We did a couple, just evenings, two hours apiece. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. All right, so we'll move on from that. We can talk about our adoption of professional development master plan. We need approval of that.
Yes, so Mr. Andruski presented that at our last meeting. Time to digest it and review it and ask questions. There are no changes proposed to it at this time, and we are seeking your approval so that we may submit that to the state for their approval.
Do I need a motion?
I move to approve the Newmarket School District Professional Development Master Plan for 2017 through 2022.
Second?
Okay, a motion from Michael Kennison, a second from Al Zink. I just need a motion to approve, I mean, a, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Ananmas, except for Kim. All right, now we have some policies, but we're going to make it all for adoption. So we're going to go from A to G. And I just needed a motion to approve policies. Should I read them all out?
No, you can say to adopt them as a slate.
Adopt them as a slate.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion from Al Zink, a second from Mike Kennison. Any discussion?
So these were the policies that we brought to you two meetings ago, the end of May. I think there were a couple of wording pieces that Ms. Alberg had pointed out, so those were addressed.
I looked at it and I thought the issue of the cellphone usage could be more specific in there.
Yeah, so-
Partially because I got to the intersection of Grant and 152, and there was one of the students that I recognized using a cellphone.
So-
Driving?
In the car. And they weren't driving, they weren't moving, but they were in the car at that intersection using cellphones.
That's not a-
So it's a, it's a law?
It's a law. I understand it's a law, but I thought we identified the bus law and the busing law and several of the other laws more specifically. And I wondered if that one might be worth being more specific.
I had, I had reached out to school board association. It wasn't part of their recommendation to include it. That doesn't mean you couldn't add it to the list if that were the will of the board. If, if it's the will of the board to do that, I would suggest we, we pull it from this group so that we can have the correct legal reference in there. But their feeling was it wasn't needed, so that's your-
I thought maybe it's addressed well in presentations that are done at the school just so, so that young people know that that is a new law.
It is, it's an important insignificant issue.
Right.
And, and the good news is, it's the law of the land for anybody getting their license and coming into that world, so.
It's honored in the breach, unfortunately. Yeah, a lot, a lot of people, I mean, I commute every day. It's like, it's not a time where I don't see somebody going like this down the road, you know?
Yeah.
So, so I think the awareness is, issue is huge. I think there was a little part of that in the movie, wasn't there, Meredith?
Oh, Screen Tens?
Screen Tens movie? And what's the other thing I was going to say? Yeah, I don't know is our policy, and you may not have been suggesting this would, could regulate conduct off of grounds or to and fro.
No, and that wasn't, I was just saying, obviously, there's, students are, are using it.
Right.
And there's, if they're not allowed to use their phone in the school as soon as they get in the car, is that the first thing they do?
Right.
Before they even get off school property?
Yep.
I think it's important, but I, I'd like to move it through and not hold it, hold it out.
So do I?
Well, you're asking for any further discussion and then you can call the vote.
All right, any further discussion?
None here.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananmas?
I, I will certainly make sure it's reinforced in handbook and procedurally, you know, students are permitted to use their phones within the school on a limited basis at designated times, as long as it's not interfering. And, and in a car, if, I, I would say as an administrator, if that came to my attention the first time, I would address it with the student. The second time, I, I would contact the parent and/or the school resource officer to have that conversation. Certainly, you know, the safety of students is our first priority. We don't dictate whether or not they have a license, but, but having the privilege to have your vehicle on school grounds means you need to be abiding by not only, you know, our rules with respect to where you park it and how you do that, but, but conducting yourself safely.
Okay. So then we're going to delete some old policies, and I'll do that again as a slate?
Yes.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to delete some old policies in a slate.
The policies that are listed in the agenda?
Yes.
And just to note, JLIER2, the SST Vehicle Consent and Release Form should be included in the deletion list. That was marked for deletion at our prior meeting.
Oh, right here, yep.
And was transposed in your agenda.
Okay. So I seek a motion?
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion from Ingrid and a second from Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananmas, delete those. All right, moving, here's good news, moving on to hiring.
Yes. So we have a nomination for you. I'm nominating Carly Harrington for the position of special, special education teacher at the junior, senior high school, replacing Helen Hoffman, who is retiring.
All right, do you need, you don't need a motion, right?
I do.
You do. Seeking a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mike Kennison and Ingrid. And any discussion?
Yeah, just for public information, I mean, we, again, the way this works is that we are relying on Meredith and her staff to vet candidates. It's not our, I guess, at least I'll say it for myself, I don't think it's our purview to get in it any further than that. I mean, that's the chain of command. But just so the public knows, in our packet, and you can see it, our, I guess, the resume, not really a resume, but sort of background. And it describes the interview process, who interviewed the candidate. So this isn't a pro forma approval, we, there's some background to this, so.
Now, note that the board has the opportunity to ask questions about potential hiring, or potential employees in a non-public session when that information is presented. So there's the opportunity to ask the superintendent any questions. Carly has worked for us for several years as a paraprofessional. She holds a master's degree in English and is excited to be stepping into this role.
And it looks like it was a fairly competitive one too, because there are three, at least three other candidates that are listed here. And interviews by seven folks, including the principal, so.
And that's before the finalist interview with the superintendent and our incoming special education director.
Right. That's all I have?
That's all you have? All right, so then we'll move on to approval of budgetary transfers.
Call that vote.
I do. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor? Do what?
We're on to item-
Okay. Approval of budgetary transfers.
One of the passes out, because they weren't in your packet, and I'll go forward through them.
Oh, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
So as you know, I've been bringing you quarterly reports, seeing where we are. And now as we're ending the year, I want to be sure that we do some budget transfers to bring certain functions in line for things that we know we've had approval for as we go through this. So for example, our video equipment, you know, we're going to have to do a transfer because that would put that function in a deficit otherwise.
All right.
So the first one has to do with just a realigning of the budget from the salary account where we budget for administrative raises. And so that is realigning. Do we need to have a-
Well, just to back up to explain why we do budgetary transfers, maybe?
Oh, okay, all right, we can do that.
So that the public has the big picture of, of why we're having this conversation at this point in the year.
So in March, the bottom line budget gets approved. And throughout the year, statutorily, the board has the ability to do transfers between different functions. So as long as there's a dollar on a function, like regular ed, special ed, whatever it might be, athletics, all the way through-
Administration, transportation.
Facilities. We cannot, as we end the year, we want to not have, end the year in a deficit for any of those functions. But throughout the year, my plan is actually going forward as we make decisions to reprioritize the budget, that we would bring those transfers. As I do my expense reports quarterly, I bring the transfers as well. There were a number of things that were approved before I took on, so I just wanted to go back and clean up some of these things. But also, the first one that you see here is, we budget at a high level, but then we provide the raises across the different functions. So we had to realign those dollars and put them into the different functions. To the extent there is a function that had other expenses offsetting it, I didn't move the funds there at this point. So that's, the first one is to realign that. Perhaps I should just go through each, or as I go through one, if you have questions on that one, well, there's seven of them. So the first one, if you have any questions, no, we'll go to the next. The next one is to transfer, we had, we're anticipating a deficit in the special ed area, a lot is for the tuition. And to the extent other things offset it, this is the net $270,000 issued in special ed. So with the change in staff, we're expecting staff and benefit elections, we're expecting a surplus in regular ed. Also, the change in staff at the principal, we have a surplus there, that's the next 2410. And then fuel oil, what was budgeted and what we're running, we're going to have a surplus there as well. And the facilities director, because we put that position in late. Maybe for the record, should I read what the amounts are or your?
Okay.
So we'll be doing a transfer with your approval of $170,000 from those functional to the other. And if you recall, some of these things, like the fuel oil, as we did next year's budget, we, we had those same savings. So a lot of these things should be familiar as we had done the budget as well. So that's that one. I don't know if there's any questions on that, meaning the savings and also deficit because special ed.
So we sage on oil?
Yes.
Which is crazy because saying a whole of it.
Well, from what was budgeted.
Right.
What was budgeted. The budget anticipated a much higher rate and it, it's, it was not running that. And the way we do our budgets in the year in advance sometimes.
Right. And we just, you never know, it's going to be cold or-
And that goes back to my, we're voting on the bottom line and as we see things later. So throughout the year, the next transfer has to do with a number of changes in different functions for health insurance. As we recruit, people come on, there's different selections than the person that might have left. So these functional areas, there's $44,000 of anticipated deficits for health insurance. And the instructional reading interventionist is, is anticipated to underrun because of some changes in staff there as well. So their health insurance went down, and I'm just realigning health insurance in this case.
And again, just so people understand, the category transfers, so those, that the 10 starts-
Oh, yes.
And again, just so people understand, the category transfers, so those, that the 10 starts, that 10 dash starts every line. And then you see 1,400, 10 dash 1,400, 10 dash 1,260, those are the functions. So the 1,200 lines are special education, the 1,100 lines are regular education, the 1,400 lines are intervention and staff support, student and staff support.
And if you remember from the quarterly reports, Al, I'm just holding up something here from the quarterly, so each one of these functions, we want to bring in line. So that's what I'm trying to group, the 1,400, so everything starts with a 10, and then you have 1,400. And then on the right, 1,260, 2130, each one of those functions, right, will.
And you just see the. Just like in our household budgets, right? We've got a bottom line that we can exceed, but we may overrun our grocery expenses one month, or our, you know, heating oil another month. At the end of the year, we can't spend more than what we have available to us to spend, so we have to make adjustments. We might, you know, cut back on the ice cream purchase in order to buy the tomatoes.
And I think it will help if I bring you the transfers quarterly when we're reviewing the results as well, and you can see why we're realigning. The next is, oh, any questions on that one? Okay, I'm on number four. The next one is transfer $14,342 to various accounts that are expecting deficit, including the career and technical tuition line, summer school, which is now complete, and psychology for some testing. What we found on those were, the enrollments were a little different than what we anticipated, so causing that, to be off a bit. And testing, there were some mandatory things that needed to.
Materials that needed to be replaced.
Happened, and it wasn't anticipated when the first budget was done. And the savings is in the advisor's compensation for clubs, for some various clubs that didn't happen for various reasons. The next one is to cover a net $80,000 issue in the technical account. So there's, we spent close to $130,000 on video, video security upgrades. However, there were other offsets within the 2230 function. So the net deficit for that function, I am forecasting about $80,000. The savings are things that have been completed, including the auditing, call it a project, but the auditing for $4,000 savings. And then as you go through here, severance, there was an employee that we anticipated retiring, and they didn't, so there's a savings there. And then there's, has been the school board, other things come up, so there's a savings there. Then my position was filled late in the year, so there's a savings there for the salary. There was a vacant gap for some time. And then change in 2410 is actually the principal's area, and that was a change in staff. So causing savings in the health insurance line. So with those anticipated surplus, I'd like the approval to transfer and cover the technology, so that's number five. Couple smaller ones to go. I tried to group each of these by, you know, what's happening here. We had a realignment of some of the non-instructional aids from the transportation area over to some of the lunch monitoring. So there's a savings in the transportation anticipated, and there wasn't budget, enough budget on the non-instructional aid. So I'm looking to realign that by $4,400.
And last but not least?
Last but not least, it's quite the coincidence, I almost thought I did it wrong. There's another $4,400 to transfer budget for a realignment of priorities for the purchase of a library software called Overdrive. So the library function of 2220 would be a deficit without having this transfer, and there's a savings in the software account for regular ed. So it kind of, I believe people anticipated having Overdrive, but they budgeted in the regular ed when it got charged over to the library. And generally, they might have done a transfer to move the expense, but it really belongs to the library. So the budget was in one place, the expense was where it's supposed to be.
Is Overdrive the electronic books?
Yeah, online.
It's the online analog system, yeah.
So that's what that last transfer is.
This is really clear. I, what's the policy relative to the requirement of the board's approval for these transfers? Because I don't recall having done this before. Either on council or here. I thought you could transfer within.
Within the function.
Right.
It can stay 1,100 to 1,100, and it's generally what the policy is. And we need to have a clear policy. We don't, I look to see what the policy was.
We didn't have clarity, and we felt this was the most prudent way to proceed.
It's great.
It's wonderful.
But it, I thought it was within your purview to make these transfers.
Day-to-day business.
Yeah, so if.
There is.
If you were gonna change the, if you were gonna keep the, if you were gonna keep the health insurance budget the same, you could work within that health.
Yes.
But I see here.
That same function, function to function.
Right, but I see here.
Each one of these went from one function to another, four-digit number to another four-digit.
So that's when you have to report it? And do we have to approve it?
Yes, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the slate of transfers that I presented, these seven transfers.
Another slate.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm wowed by the fact we've got it. I'm surprised that we never had it before, at least in my experience, I don't think we've had it before.
So is this something that's done quarterly or during the fiscal year?
Generally, it would be. But then there's always some that I'll wait to the end to bring, because you want to see, as people change, as staff change, benefit elections change, the numbers go up and down. And I don't want to say, okay, I'm gonna move money from here to there, and then someone leaves, and then, oh, I.
And things like heating oil, we don't have forced, we didn't have visibility on until after heating season's over, so it's always a.
I wouldn't bring it probably till mid-year anyways, and then, and that would be just, and even if there's a significant thing, we sit at the table and say, oh, we're gonna spend, you know, $100,000 on videos, where is that money going to come? And that's when I would bring a transfer, or we'd come to you to say, we want to do this thing that wasn't in the budget, where are we gonna find the money?
And I think those things have occurred. For example, we had to spend about $9,000 in the fall to deal with a pavement issue at the elementary school, as you may recall, because we had water issues, and that was, in conjunction with Public Works, we needed to address that. Now, we didn't have that extra $9,000 within, at the time, the facilities maintenance lines. However, we knew that at some point, there was a possibility that we might have to transfer funds into that line to cover it. As it turned out, because of the fuel oil savings, for example, we didn't have to, we were okay within those lines.
Stayed within the function.
Correct. And technology, when you approved the end of last year, the purchase of the video, the security upgrades that were approved by the board last spring, prior to my arrival, you discussed the possibility of taking some of those funds from your operating budget, potentially taking some from the Technology Trust Fund. We didn't come to you earlier in the year and say, we want to take money from the Technology Trust Fund, because we, typically, you want to see where you are within your operating budget. And as Lisa pointed out, while you approved the purchase of about $130,000 worth of video and security upgrades, we were able to absorb almost $50,000 of that within the technology budget itself, but we've needed to transfer funds to cover the remaining 80. Again, we didn't have to tap the trust, so those are the pieces that you're kind of always looking at, within your budget. As it evolves over the course of a year, special education is another one we talked to you about over the course of this year. We knew we had significant overruns in or out of district tuition based on student needs. But again, we try to absorb as much of that as we can in other areas of the budget as we move along.
So I'm gonna look for a motion to approve.
Let me ask, so for example, you're gonna adjust the auditing fee?
Right.
And you're gonna transfer $4,800?
Yes.
If we said no, what would the consequence be?
It would leave that other side in a deficit. And really, we shouldn't end the year in a deficit by function legally. We're to do our best to bring them into line.
That, I didn't understand, okay.
You might have heard, in the past, I hear people say this, you have to have a dollar on the line when you're going through your budget.
Yeah.
It's not really the dollar on the 10-digit number, it's the dollar on the function. So you need to, so if you decide to disband, I don't know.
Career and technical education went away completely.
Right.
You'd want to leave a dollar there in the event that you changed your mind.
Right, so then you can transfer money back over.
I see, okay.
Because you'll still have your big bottom line budget, you'll have your total millions of dollars, but how much of that goes to each account?
Do you, in this new shared services concept, are you providing the same information to the town?
I plan to, I plan to, and I'll talk to the town administrator about how he wants to approach that. I just have always known and talked to Meredith about, we've always planned to do the transfers. They hadn't done them on the town, so I need to talk to the town administrator, I've only been on the job a few months there.
Well, that's no excuse.
I would say, and I can't speak to the town side, but within the school side, this is fairly typical practice. And certainly, you know, your board policy could dictate it being done a different way. But in the absence of policy, again, we felt that this was the most prudent way to proceed, and we'll certainly have a policy discussion with you later. But again, I think this is, this is the way our business occurs, and there's nothing wrong with having you and the public be very aware of how that plays out.
And it's required, is that right?
The category, staying within the category of expenditures is required by law.
There's a big difference on the town side, though, when it comes, their functions are generally standalone departments. So police, fire, DPW. You don't always see, unless at the town administrator level, the reprioritization that, okay, we're going to use some of the police money to go buy a truck in DPW.
Right.
You know, so you don't see that as much. But in the school, and the school people are very much used to that, the principal has oversight for various speech, OT, special ed.
Library.
You know, in some regards, they monitor what happens in facilities in their building as well. So the principals are used to having all these different, these, they're not truly departments, but staff departments in one regard, reporting unto them. So each, each one of those groups are used to that, so we don't spend it twice. So when we say, oh, you know, well, we need, we're gonna buy some additional, the principal reprioritizes the textbooks, but, okay, so we don't need that, but we're going to.
But we have to make heating repairs.
Yeah, we have to, and we reprioritize stuff, so.
So for example.
So we didn't buy a lot of new equipment, knowing we had all the building repair stuff, until we got to a place where, oh, maybe we can afford to do that now, without putting one in a deficit.
So for example, on the town side, you could not transfer police money to the fire department?
You can. It's just not, it's, right, right.
But within the police department?
Oh, yeah, they do, but it's just, that's how they manage it.
And those wouldn't need to be approved at that level.
So perhaps that's why, you know, you don't see it as much.
Right, if there was a catastrophic need in town to take $50,000 from the police department to put towards, I don't know, a new.
Or roads.
Then that kind of thing would probably come up to the council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, not my area.
Right. So then.
So just so I, this is, this is very helpful, and it's clear, just a few questions, Lisa.
Sure.
The pages two through seven, they look to me generally like things that could be variable, right, throughout the year, and that's why you have to make the adjustments. Is the first page, are those salaries?
Yes, yeah.
And why would those be adjustable?
Well, because it was all budgeted in one, and because the budget went to 2320, as, as we give a raise to special ed, say, you know, the administrator, they're, if everything else was spent right to their budget, they're going to have a deficit for the salary, because we didn't budget the salary increase.
So just to be clear, that number, the board appropriated, as part of the budget process, a year, year and a half before, whatever, earmarked a total percentage of the salaries for administrators and SAU employees, and just set aside those dollars and left it to the discretion of the superintendent at that time to divvy those funds up. But those decisions hadn't been made at the time of budget. And so you have to go back and reallocate those to the personnel.
What's the, on the first page, what's negotiations, what does that mean?
That's just the title that is in the financial system.
What I was gonna ask, just my own knowledge, and I guess all of our knowledge, is that, is this is a software program, you don't have to drill down into this, does this give you alerts when things are off, or does?
Only when you go to approve a purchase order or encumber funds, it will say you're over. And a lot of times, honestly, with like special ed, because we have the IEP, we're required to do it, and it's a bit fluid, can be. So if we're sitting here doing the budget on the students we have now, and we know what IEPs we have in place, but say next year, something different changes, or a student comes in or out, then it's gonna cause an issue there, and that's.
And in your software, essentially what happens is, you as an administrator can still put your request in, but, but it triggers like a special prompt to the, ultimately to the BA, when that purchase order is approved, saying you're, this line is in deficit, are you sure you want to authorize this expenditure?
So I look at a more in-depth report, and the good news is, say someone budgeted, I don't know, $10,000 for supplies, and then once they do their bid, it came to $8,500. Well, I know I have locked in on a surplus that I keep rolling in my memory to say, oh, I'll be able to use that for something else.
Just in, sorry.
No, it's great.
So on the second page, my question there is that, the general concept is it has to be kept within categories?
I do that to make it a little easier to have the conversation with you all. I could have picked any, I could have took a surplus from, from the business administrator and put it towards that, but I just chose to do regular ed to special ed, I just chose to do that.
Because the reason I ask, and, help me understand if, like, so we're saving money in fuel oil, and it's going, among other things, among other surpluses listed, it's going to.
Special ed.
The 1,200's function.
So 1,200's special ed.
So we would otherwise be $170,000 below what we need in the special education function of the budget. So we can pull those funds from anywhere to make that offset.
That's what I wanted to know, okay, cool.
Oh, yes.
All right, yep, that's all.
Okay. Yes, not having seen them before, I can see.
No, but now that we have seen them, they make total sense.
Makes sense, yeah.
And I, you know, and I would have tried to get it in the packet in advance, but even then, it probably would have had more questions.
No.
And you know, bills come in every day.
I wanted to take the time to explain it.
No, this, I will tell you in the years that I've been here, this is the most helpful piece of information I've had in a long time, because I do remember all the different areas of them. And all these trended as we were having conversations for next year. So special ed, we knew we had, we had an issue all year as I'm reporting out the quarter.
So I guess the next.
So I'm gonna pass this copy for signature once the board makes its motion.
We can talk about policy later.
Oh, yes, we can revisit this whole.
So I need a motion to approve, approval of budgetary transfers.
So moved?
Second.
Mike Kennison, Al Zink. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We have another budgetary item that we want to share with you, and I'll pass this down for signature.
The report that you handed out a couple of meetings ago, where you looked at the budget percent remaining and so forth.
Yes.
When did that, when do you, that was also very helpful, when did that?
Well, I'll do that for, if you're not meeting in July, for August. I'm going to look at the end of the year, at the end of the quarter, as I do all my reports for September 1st.
So that'll be a quarterly report that we'll get?
Yes, yeah, end of the year report that will flow into the end of the year state reports that are all due for September 1st. DOE 25, MS 25, it's a little different number, but it's, it's some other master report that you'll all.
And this is kind of driving that?
Yes, yeah, so this is as we're ending the, end of the year.
And, and it's as we close our books, and we'll do our audit, happens during the summer as well, so all of those pieces tie in to by September, we have to submit information, essentially to, to the Department of Revenue Administration, which then helps with tax setting for. with tax setting for the next year and determines your final fund balance and all of those pieces.
So that's a good lead-in to this last bit, um, of information that as we end, as I end the year, I'll be looking at the fund balance. And I, as you know, uh, we talked about holding back a percent of the fund balance to help offset, um, taxes for future years. So what that is, is we're allowed to take 2.5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment per, um, the RSA, per the law 198, which the voters approved to permit the board to allow up to 2.5%. I do not, at this point, have the final fund balance, but I'd like your approval as I go to develop that over the next couple of months, 'cause I don't know that you'll be meeting, uh, formally.
Okay.
To approve that we, that I can, uh, that the, uh, school district, that I can take the steps to hold back up to 2.5% of net assessment, which is $331,000.
As voted by.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was approved by Warren Article, um, three years ago? Was that right?
In, um, 2014, actually. Article four.
Hmm.
So then you, you need a motion?
So in 2014, voters approved the school board having the authority to withhold up to 2.5% of the fund balance on an annual basis. So we're asking for, for you to approve, conceptually, that that be the direction we take this year. We will come back to you, as Lisa points out, with, with that final number in, well, August.
August. I'll have it for August.
But conceptually, we wanna know that it's the will of, whether or not it's the will of the board for us to withhold that maximum number, up to that maximum number. We certainly can't hold back any more than that, um, in, in order to help offset future tax years. And then we'll come back to you for the approval. But in order to, when we work with our auditors, we wanna know that we can say, the, the board has authorized us moving forward with this, the maximum retainage possible.
And we'll most likely revisit this again in the fall, when I do set the final tax rate and have the final revenues. Because, um, having not gone through this before, I wanna just be in the best position with the auditors when they come in in August to make sure I have your support. So I'll be figuring what the final fund balance is, to the extent the dollars are there, which I anticipate will be, um, that directionally we're, I have your support to do that.
But the board could say no.
Oh, yes. You'll have it.
Return the 331 to...
Yes. So you'll have one more opportunity when I do the final, um, tax rate.
So, uh, the, the board's decision is to, do you retain the $3,000 in a fund balance? Or do we return it to the taxpayer to reduce taxes? Is that right?
And remember that we, we received that $540,000 this year of state building aid. And so our projection, at Lisa's last quarterly projection, was that, setting that aside, we anticipated pretty close to a break even.
Right. Yeah.
So we still would be returning roughly $210,000 minimum, most likely to taxpayers anyway, this year. And so the idea was, as we were stepping into bond, and those rates were gonna increase, that if we could help offset that jump in tax impact for taxpayers, that we would look at doing that. And so what we're telling you is, we anticipate that we will be able to do that. We wanna know right now if, conceptually, that's something the board wants us to, to continue to explore with our auditors. And then we will come back to you in August with a final number, um, per retainage.
So we're agreeing with the general concept?
Correct. Yes.
Which we talked about last year.
Yeah. And the, the whole idea here is, is to stop the tax rate from porpoising to, you know, yeah. And then so it's not, it's not as if this is, we're appropriating these funds for something particular. Some particular additional expense of the school district. So...
Correct. I can read the Warren article that was approved by voters in 2014. Um, it says, "To see if the school district will vote to authorize indefinitely until rescinded to retain year-end unassigned general funds in an amount not to exceed in any fiscal year 2.5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment. In accordance with RSA 1984B2, such fund balance retained may only be used to reduce the tax rate or for emergencies to be approved by the Department of Education under RSA 3211." And at the time, that was recommended by the school board, 5-0.
Doesn't change any of the appropriations. It doesn't allow you to spend any more money than you've already, you know, been...
The biggest thing is just to keep the tax, trying to keep the tax...
That's what it's about. Yeah.
And again, that $540,000 was unanticipated when you set your budget a year ago.
And at some point, we'll determine, are we going to use the whole 300, up to that max amount, or something less, when we have the final fund balance numbers?
So I'd be looking for an approval of fund balance retention.
I, so motion or?
Motion. How do you want it worded?
Yeah. Um...
To authorize the business administrator to pursue retainage of up to 2.5%.
Fund balance retain, yeah, fund balance retention up to 2.5%.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we, just as a matter of form, shouldn't we approve Meredith or her designee? Right? Because we're not supposed to, right? So, same thing.
Sure.
Same.
Yes, you could say that. The superintendent to guide.
All right. Say it out loud again.
Move to authorize the superintendent to pursue retainage up to the maximum 2.5%.
As approved.
Fund balance retention to the maximum 2.5% as approved by voters.
So moved.
Second.
So, motion from Mike Kennison and Ingrid. All right. Um, any discussion?
None.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Right. Now we're going to talk about hiring staff over the summer.
Oh, yes. I skipped that one entirely. Um, so, again, this is my first end-of-school year with all of you, but it's my understanding that historically, and I know that it was conveyed to me last summer, that the superintendent, um, historically is given the authority to do hiring for professional staff during the summer months. Um, because we have, as you saw, two resignations tonight, and the board is not scheduled to meet again until mid-August. And it helps us reduce the risk of losing strong, qualified candidates by trying to wait until we can get a board meeting.
Right. Not have a special meeting.
Yep.
That, that does not extend, I just wanna be very clear, that does not extend to any administrative hiring. And I don't anticipate any administrative openings. But if that were to occur, I, I would wait until we were able to pull a quorum of the board together.
All right. So I just need a motion to approve Meredith for her hiring over the summer.
So moved.
Al, second. So a motion from Mike Kennison, second from Al Zink. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right. Now we're gonna look for the approval minutes. Is that it?
Take motion to approve June 3, 2017, 10:00, meeting minutes.
Second.
A, approval by Al Zink, second by Ingrid. Um, any discussion? Anybody find anything? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes. Um, and we have a manifest.
I move that we approve the manifest, the regular manifest, at $253,569.95. Yeah, the lump sum payroll at 1,000, $136,194, for a total of $389,763.95. And the, uh, total accounts payable at $373,849.2, for a total of all manifests at $762,848.87.
Second.
Okay. And, um, a motion from Ingrid and a second from Mike Kennison. Any discussion? Seeing there's none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right. Then we have some donation. Well, we accepted the donations from Link Together.
Yes.
And then we have another one.
Yes. So Link Together has brought forward a donation of $639.20. And the Exeter Running Club has, um, is offering a donation of $500 to the junior senior high school cross-country team. Excuse me. And we would ask that in accordance with your policy, the board approve both of those donations, um, as allocated to the playground fund and the cross-country team respectively.
We'll move. Second.
Great. Um, any, uh, a motion from Al and a second from Ingrid. Any discussion?
Um, just, uh, thank you, I guess. And, um, Exeter Running Club donation, how did that come about?
So they have, um, members from, um, the town of Newmarket and...
Oh, really? Okay.
...sometimes run in the town of Newmarket.
Nice.
And they, they made us that offer.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right. Um, we don't have a need for non-public. We had that earlier.
So announcement of upcoming meetings. So Building Committee meeting June 21st and July, uh, at 4:00 PM. And July 25th, oh my goodness, those numbers look small right now. July 25th at 6:30 PM, both of those meetings in the Town Hall Auditorium. School Board's next meeting, um, as of right now, is scheduled for August 24th at 7:00 PM. And we will, um, explore potential alternate dates for that meeting and post those. And then August 30th, 2017, we scheduled a joint meeting with the Town Council at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Auditorium.
All right. Anything else? Seek a motion to...
So moved.
So moved. Second.
From Mike, second from Al. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are done at 8:44. Thank you.